So, order please call the roll.
Kuz.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Severson.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Will you join me in the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Our first time in business, a public hearing on Resolution 152603 amending the 2015 general government operating in capital budget for the library department $2,000. Is there anybody here to speak to that tonight? Seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. It brings us down to communications. We have a letter from the State Department of Transportation regarding the STIP. I think we've seen that. That brings us down to persons to be heard. And George, you needed to go first tonight?
My name is George Wyver, and I live at 731 Hill Road. And I've got a few questions for the council. We got a group together, we're calling the Cut Ten. And I could explain that to you, but you wouldn't understand what it means. It's cut 10% right off the budget to start with. There's open, and that wouldn't affect anything. But, and we're gonna have to force that. But the one thing that the members can, I know you're not gonna answer any questions because that's not your job.
Are you already campaigning?
There's larger communities and a lot of constituents. Do it. I mean Anchorage, Juneau. What we can't understand is why the council paid and pick ten is the highest incentive state. And that's gonna be one of our questions. And we really, now, you've got four shoe-ins and you've got an obvious file, so there's, now you've got a three-year term and a one year, so nothing's gonna change. And we all appreciate that. But people are getting a little set up with it. And I don't think that bothers any of you, but it bothers a lot of people on the outside. And I guess that, you got any questions? I could be real specific about things. Little things that kinda want to like. I know Julie runs a business. And on your doo-doo, if you have a position vacant for eight, 10 months, do you need the position? I don't know. But these are the kind of things that are bothering Cut Ten people. And I don't know if there's any, if you wanna respond to any of it now, or you just want to say go away. Nothing's gonna change. And we all know, nothing's gonna change.
Thanks, George. Next, Linda.
Good evening. My name is Linda Coonzager. I reside at 841 Forest Avenue. And tonight, I am speaking on behalf of Alaska Small Business Development Center, Ketchikan. And I want to, once again, thank you for your generous support of the center. And I wanted to share with you some exciting things that are happening. Last month, a PTAC representative from Anchorage came down. And PTAC is one of our family of services. They're the procurement technical assistance center. And their specialty is to assist businesses who are interested in bidding on government contracts. And while she was here, she shared that in area code 99901, there is over $300 million out there in potential contracts for Alaska companies. And she also shared that with the government entities that she's in communication with. A lot of those contracts are not going to Alaska businesses. They're going to outside businesses because Alaskans aren't bidding for it. So Jody and I have started working collaboratively. And on the third Thursday of this month, she will be presenting on government contracting at our third Thursday lunch and learn program. And that will be at the center on the 20th from 12 to 1:00. And then on the 26th, she is doing a specific government contracting webinar that will be broadcast at the center. And that is on the 26th from 2:00 to 4:00. And so I'm encouraging people to sign up for that if they are interested in pursuing government contracting. How PTAC and SPDC will work together is that we help the businesses with helping, assisting them to become ready to become a government contractor. So if they don't have the surety bond in place, or they need to increase their surety bond, then we can assist them with that process. We can assist them with, you know, making sure they have up-to-date financials and whatever's needed. And then PTAC is the center that actually assists them in the specific getting you ready to write that bid for the government contract. So I'm really excited about that. I'd really like to see, right now, what Jody's shared with me is that construction companies, and even someone with a handyman license, could be bidding on some of these projects. So that, to me, is very exciting. The center is very busy right now, which is really wonderful. We are assisting Southern Southeast Alaska from Kank South. And then the Anchorage Center has actually had a overflow of clients. They've recently hired two new business advisors, so that will subside. But there are four outside Anchorage business advisors that are helping with that overflow. And I have, I have a number of clients that I'm working with that might in fact be handed over, I'm not sure. But it's really nice to be working statewide and honing those distance delivery skills. So it's exciting times, and I'm here again, thank you, and to ask you if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Yeah, Linda, has this agency or whoever's saying there's $300 million in town ever went to some of our local contractors and asked them why they won't bid on a government contract? I think they should, because I can give you some specific examples where they won't bid because they don't trust the damn, excuse me, agency. And I'll be quiet, but they need to check it out.
I can tell you that you are not saying anything that has not already been said before.
So how do we fix agencies?
One of the frustrations that I hear a lot is just with the SAM program, which is part of being registered. So, you know, it's just increasing those communications. And I know that Jody does have clients that she works with here, but they are under the confidentiality agreement as well, so we can't divulge who our clients are. But she is servicing people in South, not servicing, but advising people in Southeast.
You need to guide the agencies how to be better contractors.
Any other questions? Oh, sorry.
I'm good.
Any other questions for Linda? Thank you, Linda.
Thank you very much.
Kathleen Light.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Wickelman. I live at 702 South Point Higgins. I'm the secretary of the board of directors of the Ketchikan Area Arts and Humanities Council. And I am here to request your support for the proposal to convey Fire Station 1 to the Arts Council. If you've had an opportunity to look at the proposal, you know that if conveyed, the Arts Council intends to use Fire Station 1 to, as the site of an artist residency program. And as it states in our proposal, the Arts Council has already put in a lot of planning and preparation for an artist residency program. But when Fire Station 1 came into the picture, it got a lot closer to reality for the board. I just wanted to share a little story with you about how that went. Most of the members of the board toured the facility on May 27. And then later in the day, we got together at the Main Street Gallery and talked about what we thought. We shared our impressions, our fears, what the possibilities were, and to vote on whether to go forward with presenting a proposal to seek ownership of the building from the city. The board agreed, I think, each and every one of us, that we were incredibly excited about the possibilities presented by this building. But we also admitted to each other that we were terrified, just terrified. This is a huge, huge project. We need partners, we need a lot of money. But this is just so very exciting about what we can do with the Artist Residency Program. We have an incredible executive director, we have an incredible staff, we're a dedicated board. We talked about, we're all willing to work really hard to make this happen. So we decided to go forward. Finally, I just wanted to say, the Arts Council already contributes dramatically to the quality of life in our community. But we wanna do more, there's more to do. As part of the Arts Council vision, there's a statement that says in part, stick my glasses off. "The arts empower us to continually reinvent ourselves to be relevant and creatively cutting-edge in order to keep the importance and value of the arts in our community's consciousness and to help our community thrive. We believe that time for an artist residency program is now, and the place is Fire Station 1." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Light. I'm the director of the Arts Council. I live at 410 Cedar Lower. I'm also gonna speak about the artist residency real briefly. But first of all, I wanna thank the city and all of the city departments that helped to make another successful Blueberry Arts Festival. It was the 40th annual. I especially wanna thank Public Works, KPU, the managers who are awesome, the police station, the fire department, Ports and Harbors, and the Community Emergency Response Team, which is a volunteer group that works with the fire station and the police for the safety in the community. Those guys are awesome, and we wanna publicly thank them for helping make another successful Blueberry Arts Festival. The festival had over 130 booths that participated, including artists, food vendors, nonprofits fundraising for themselves, and other entities providing information throughout the community. We did several new events this year. We're trying to freshen it up, keep it fun for the community to go to, and also economically viable for the booths' holders that participate. We think we did a good job this year. We do estimate about 8,000, excuse me, 8,000 people go through the festival every year. And that includes the gallery exhibit at the Main Street Gallery, which I hope all of you will come and check it out. It's one of the best ones we have every year, and it's an annual show. Okay, and then for the fire station, just a few things to think about as you're considering our proposal. One thing is the development of an arts district in downtown Ketchikan. And what does that mean? Well, if you look out the door right now, First City Players is having a dance rehearsal in their lower level. We're having a dance event over at our building. That's an extra 50 to 75 people downtown that wouldn't normally be here. Every first Friday of the month, at least 200 people go through our gallery. And every Friday after that, we have dance events. So weekly, we move 500 people at least through this, through downtown, through Main Street, every week. And those people don't just come to our events. They park their car, they spend their money, they have to put gas in their car. There's a whole range of other things that they have to do when they get out of their homes. And that's part of the economic development of an arts district. With an artist residency downtown and the fire station, this is another piece in building an arts district in Ketchikan. So I just want you to consider that. Also, the preservation of one of Ketchikan's historic buildings. This is the first fire station in Ketchikan. That's significant. If we sell it to somebody who's open only part of the year, what value does that bring to your community? Do they keep it a historic building? Do they keep it open all year long? Do they provide activity in this area that happens continuously year-round? That's an important part of a healthy community. Economic development, I already talked about that. Also, timing. We have been having this proposal ready to go for about a month, and it's just now been able to get to you. We are at a, at this point, we'd like you to consider the timing. We believe that launching this residency and in partnership with the carvers from Saksman is beneficial to the profile of the artist residency. I won't lie, the carvers at Saksman are famous. And we would like to ride their coattails, and they're willing to let us, to market the artist residency. And it's powerful. Nathan Jackson is a powerful name in the world. And to have him in this artist residency to kick it off is significant. We'd like to be able to take advantage of that while they are renovating the carving shed at Saksman. We don't expect the carvers to stay there. They will go back to Saksman, but at least we'll have a few months with them in the building. While they're in the building, we'll be able to look at the upstairs area, figure out how to clean it up, how to get it usable for artists to come in and use. And then we can move downstairs and turn that into studios and get it going. And I just wanna remind you, this is not something that's only for what you would consider formal artists. This is for everybody. This is for the community to use. We want craftspeople there, we want artisans, we want language to happen there, we want preservation of our culture to happen there, we want that to be a vibrant part of Ketchikan's culture. And we need your partnership to make that happen. So I will be here till the end, when it gets to the bitter end of the agenda and our item comes up. And we also have an artist in the community who is in our artist residency task force, and she'll stick around if you want an artist perspective of what an artist residency can do for them. And that's it. Did you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much, Kathleen. Max Mercer.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Max Mercer, 600 Main Street. I'm talking with you today as the grant developer for the city of Saksman. The city of Saksman is in support of the Fire Station 1 conveyance to the Arts Council. In the short term, as Kathleen pointed out, we see it as an alternative space for our carvers to work while the existing Saksman Carving Center is being renovated. So the existing carving center is gonna be under renovation for about six months. And Saksman's carving workforce needs a place to do their work and keep on going. You know, and in the medium term, we think an artist residency program is a wonderful idea. The idea of a downtown flourishing arts district is very attractive. You know, we've been working with the Arts Council for a while to deal with this transition. And we've even managed to garner a little bit of money to help with the transition. So the city of Saksman has some funding that'd be willing to kick in to cover some utility costs and that kind of thing when the carvers are there, if the conveyance actually happens. So we wanted to let you know about that. So please approve the conveyance. We're excited about our partnership with the Arts Council. I will not be here later, so if you have any questions, now would be the time.
Do you guys have any open room down at the port, your port facility?
We're at 100% occupancy for the first time in a long time at our warehouse. We, if push came to shove, we would find a way to make space for them. It would not be pretty, though. But I'm sure it could happen. I will, I should say, I'm not the city manager. I don't know if it could happen, but the carvers are so important to Saksman that we can't imagine them being left out in the cold, so.
Thank you very much. Jennifer.
Does this come down?
I think so. Add it to Jennifer.
I can help it. It's a secret little story. Yeah. I think we both are.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Jackson. I came to talk to you about spending the day at my wheels. Spending the day at my wheels, hoping, spending that day anywhere to hear the view of what it's like to get around in this humidity. And hopefully it'll open your eyes to what ecstasy is.
So Jennifer is back from doing the Miss Wheelchair Alaska generally. And she is, part of her job as Miss Wheelchair is to advocate and do public appearances for her community. This event, or it's kind of like a demonstration, would be you guys would participate in doing a little excursion in wheelchairs to see what it's like to spend a day with, in her chair. They won't be electric, though. I wish I could get that many. Anybody got electrics? So basically, I put my information where you can get ahold of me and let me know if you can do it. I did send some emails, and I sent them out in the mail. And we are inviting the borough council and the school board to participate, too. Hopefully, we're hoping in, like, in a year, we're gonna do an actual challenge where we can do a community fundraiser. So it'd be kinda like a buy-in.
When do you need to have RSPs and buy?
Next week, if that's possible. The 21st, I guess that's about two weeks away now, right? So if I know next week, it'll help me get chairs. Because I'll be robbing the hospital in a few other places. Rendezvous is gonna help us with a few, but they don't have as many as they used to, so.
Thank you very much. Any questions for you? Well, thank you. It's a great event. Next, Emily Chapel.
Hello. My name is Emily Chapel, 764 South Point Higgins. But I'm here today representing the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition. I've got two things that I would like to speak to you guys about. The first is, I also have an invite. You guys are popular. So, we've got, oh, I better wait till I get back to my office. An internationally run speaker in office coming to town, and his specialty is community collaborations and civic development. Anybody else who'd like one? I'd be pleased to pass them up. And so if you guys can make it, that's next Wednesday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Lunch is provided. This guy's really amazing, and he has a knack for getting communities fired up and working together collaboratively. So what we've done is we're inviting people from all across the community. Everybody who's anybody is gonna be there to start this conversation about what are some of our larger challenges, not just specifically for the city, not just specifically for the borough, but community-wide, and then what we can do about it. It's very practical, he's to the point, but he's also visionary, so he invokes that excitement and that creativity. So it's gonna be fun, and it's gonna be wonderful. So I'd love to see you guys there. The next thing that I have to chat with you guys about is, actually starts with a story. So recently, I was walking back to my office after running some errands downtown, and it was a really blustery, really rainy, nasty day. And right there along on Stedman, I come across a woman who is passed out in a puddle. Her face is literally in a puddle, her mouth is open. And from first appearances, she's homeless. And my first thought, literally, is, oh my goodness, she's gonna die. She's out here in the weather, she's not covered and fully clothed, and her face is in a puddle. She's gonna drown. And so I do like anybody else would do, and I shake her and I say, ask her, ma'am, do you need help? And her eyes open wide up, and she looks at me, and she says, yes. Okay. So I say, well, my office is right over here, John, come inside and have some tea. So I invite her inside, we sit her down. You guys, she's in rough shape. She's urinated on herself, she doesn't have adequate clothing, she's probably malnourished, along with some other things, and was definitely inebriated. And so I ask her if she wanted, if she had any place to go, and she told me no. And I, so I said, would you like me to try to help you find someplace to go? And she said, yes. I worked for sale for two years. It's a resource center. As a layperson, I feel pretty confident in knowing what resources are in town. As anybody who could have walked upon her, I knew who to call. I knew where to go. I mean, that in itself was a step up already. So I did that. I called everybody. I called, I don't know if I wanna call people out right now, but I called all the usual suspects, all the services that I know about. And doors were closed everywhere I went. There weren't any options. I went to the religious community, there was no options there. And this was really sad and really frustrating to me because we are a resource-rich community. We have so many awesome and wonderful things going on. We have so many strengths. And so it was really kind of interesting because the reason that I found that these doors were closing to her were the exact reason that she needed help. So the reason she couldn't get help, her alcoholism, was the exact reason she needed help. And it was, the irony was just so thick there. So we didn't have any options. So I let her sleep it off a little bit, and then I call, she woke up, and I asked her, I said, well, I can't really find any place for you to go. Would you like to go to the emergency room? And she said, yes, but I just got discharged. And then she starts just shaking her head, going, they should never have let me go, they should never have let me go. And so I'm not a homeless, an expert on homelessness in Ketchikan. I'm not an expert on any of these issues. This is just a personal story and an example of where we have resource gaps. And so I didn't really know what to do with this information. I called my grand coordinator, like, I've got this situation. This kinda ties into behavioral health, which is what I'm looking at. So then she led me to Scott Cambor. He and Pat Sidmore recently came to town with the Alaska Mental Health Trust Authority, and Badaba, I don't know what that stands for, but they came to town recently, and they were asking some of these questions. So I got in contact with them, and he said that this is not uncommon to find gaps in resources. In Ketchikan specifically, the gaps are a detox center. We don't really have any place where people can go to get clean and sober. The day shelter currently is kind of doing that, but that's kind of an unsafe option. You know, there's people sleeping it off, where there's other people, you know, getting a shower and getting a meal. You know, and really, they shouldn't be having to do that. That isn't, they're not necessarily trained for that or have a skill set, you know? And then we don't have any transitional housing for people who are coming out of rehab. And then we don't have any long-term supportive housing. And these are the three things that, when they came down, they identified in our community, and these were from the service providers. So I got a firsthand account of this, you know, just by walking back to my office. And so there, I know that are no short-term solutions for this woman or for any of these situations. But what some of the other communities are doing is the city councils formed commissions or committees, just like you've done with the marijuana, just like you've done with other things. And they started sparking these conversations and pulling people to the room and taking the lead and saying, okay, what can we do? Because we are resource-rich. We've got so many wonderful things, we've got brilliant minds, we've got a lot of creative people. So I really think the solutions are here, you guys. I think our community has what it takes to heal itself and to support these people. I also feel like it's the responsibility of the community to take care of every single citizen who lives here, regardless of their economic status, regardless of the struggles they're facing. So that's really what I'm bringing forward to you guys. So Juneau has recently done that. They've made, I guess not recently, they've been working on it for a few years. Their city council formed a commission of sorts or committee after eight homeless individuals died on their street, and they said, no more, this is enough. I don't wanna see that in Ketchikan. I don't wanna see our homeless people have to start dying before we say, let's have this conversation. And I think that that's where it starts. So that's what I'm bringing to you guys. Like I said, I don't, I can't answer a lot of questions on homelessness in Ketchikan. I can just attest to the fact that I identify these resource gaps just in my own personal daily life. And like I said, I feel pretty competent in knowing which resources are available. And if it was anybody else, maybe they wouldn't have even known, and still, there weren't options available. So I just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention. Please just start thinking about that. And as you move forward, perhaps form a committee or a council as time opens up, as maybe some of these other issues close out, et cetera, et cetera. Because I think we can make a difference, you guys. So, thank you for hearing me out. We'd love to see you next Wednesday. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Emily? Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, you guys.
Spencer.
Spencer Strasburg, 618 Canyon. I came here to take a kind of swing at this E-SIG tax thing. But before I did, I wanted to just share my appreciation with council member Kuz on that federal construction ban, whatever. And I thought I'd tell you, if you ever wanna chew the fat on that, I think maybe I'd be willing to do that with you because I've... cause I've gotten involved in a little of that. And when I saw your eyes perk up, I thought, wow, there's a guy that understands where I'm coming from. So if you ever wanna chew the fat on that, I would. Moving right along though, I wanted to talk about this E-SIG tax thing a little bit. I've been given this a lot of consideration. I think my position changes all the time on it. The more that I learn, the more my position changes on it. It still hasn't, my position hasn't changed. This is, this is not a good tax. I believe the other day at the Borough Meeting, I called it a money grab. There's kind of a powder keg brewing and I think the people that I hear and the people that I talk to have kind of upgraded that to just a flat-out tax scam. It's taxation without representation. The way that thing came out, we're gonna take all that money, we're gonna slice off 15% and we may put that toward the goal, that was extremely distasteful. This is a money grab if we're not fixing the problem. So I kinda, I moved on and I came up with a few figures the other day for the Borough. I just did a little bit of research. I'm gonna continue to research into this further. But what I did is I was trying to figure out what kind of problem we have here. And we'll start talking about $1.2 million. What kind of a problem do we have in our town that requires 1.2 million from a select population of people? And so I wanted to clarify a couple of things cause a guy had made some comments at the Borough Meeting. And so I wanted to make a couple of clarifications here in this statement. My first call was to the Police Department to say, how many kids do we have in this town that are being cited for minors smoking tobacco? And the answer to that was six calls in all of 2014. I thought, wow, that seems kinda small. And I said, well, how about in 2015? It's probably getting bigger or what? And she said, well, we've had two calls for that. And I thought, there's gotta be more kids out there smoking cigarettes under age. I see them all the time. So I asked her, I said, well, you guys riding by the mall or anything? How many calls do you get from the mall? Not one in all of 2014, not one in 2015 for underage smoking. And I thought, wow, what are we doing about enforcement? So she told me, you know, but we don't get all the cases. And so maybe you should check with the city clerk. So I called the city clerk and she confirmed the exact same number, six in 2014, two in 2015. And, but she said something about, but we don't get all of them or something. And so I didn't really understand what that meant. And then I think the fellow that added some more figures to the Borough Meetings had explained that he worked at the youth court and that he thought that maybe about 20 cases a year or something. He said he didn't really have any figures recently, but this was going back a couple of years. That there were about 20 cases referred to the youth court. And so I think maybe that's where some discrepancy might've come in. I think the eight calls in 18 months I'm talking about are actual citations. And the 20 calls he's talking about are probably referrals to youth court. And so I thought the number seemed pretty small or whatever. And when I talked with Councilmember Harris, he told me that he put a call in with the District Attorney and asked him some questions. And he had told him that we don't have any money to prosecute those cases, that we have to prioritize. And that, you know, methamphetamine and robberies and things like that are more important. So we have to prioritize and we don't have the money to take care of these cases. And then that's when it kinda dawned on me, I'm not really sure that cessation is our problem. We've been throwing tons and tons and tons of money at commercials and research and telling kids, hey man, don't smoke. I think that it's in enforcement. As the more I started looking at that a little bit, saying, well, what does that really do for us if we don't really have enforcement? And we have other situations we can look at, but let's just think about it with our kids here. We don't have any enforcement. And I think Terrence Robbins pointed out at the Borough Meeting that the 19-year-olds are selling the cigarettes to the underage kids. And that that's kind of this black market thing that's going on here. But that's mostly where your trouble is, is with the 19-year-olds going to the 18-year-olds. Well, I kinda took it a step further and I was thinking, well, you know, if we throw $3 a pack tax on top of them cigarettes, that's our Ketchikan black market over there. We don't really have a whole lot of people smuggling stuff or something like that going on. But that's really where our Ketchikan black market is, those cigarettes there. If we throw $3 a pack in those, we actually add value to that product. So now that 14 or 15-year-old kid who's stealing cigarettes from his parents who had to pay more, he got a raise in his little deal here. He steals some smokes over here and his parents paid more money for him so he can get more money for them when he resells them to the other kids. When we start to fund the black markets, just kinda like marijuana, we just decided that wasn't a very good idea across pretty much the whole US is catching on fire with this prohibition hasn't been the right thing to do. So when we start to jack the price of those cigarettes up and they get higher and higher and higher, we create more trouble in that black market. That kid who's trading those cigarettes that have a higher value can sit at home longer and play Xbox and not get a job over at that local cafe washing dishes. He can work that system. But according to this, we've only caught like eight in 18 months. And we know the problem's bigger than that. We've got statistics and stuff from the Wellness Coalition that tell us like 21% of our kids are smoking. But we only got eight. So what message are we really sending to the kids? Cause at the beginning of this thing, we were saying, hey, you people over there, you're sending our kids a message about smoking and we don't like it. So we're gonna throw $3 a pack on top of this. And then that's gonna help us to actually send a better message to them. But in the meantime, we're not enforcing enforcement. So then we're actually teaching those kids at 14, 15, 16-years-old that the law, it doesn't really matter or it doesn't really apply to them. Or maybe it's not important enough, so we put it so far down in the burner, ah, it's just smoking. We don't even treat it like alcohol with minors. When a cop gets a kid and he gets him with some booze, man, they're on top of him to find out where'd that booze come from. We wanna know where that booze comes from. When we catch a kid with smoking, do we have the same attitude? Do we go, hey, where'd those smokes come from? We're running these back down. No, we don't. It's not that big a problem. It's not that big a problem to even dedicate some money to it. Well, then I thought to myself, I'm certain there's gotta be money dedicated to this. And as I thought about it, I said, wait, what about that $2 a pack tax that the state collects? I mean, every pack of smokes coming into the state, there's $2 a pack coming off of them. What portion of that money does Ketchikan get? I still haven't found that answer. I'm gonna keep digging until I get it. But I wondered to myself, if the state collected it from them smokers saying, hey, if you're gonna bring smokes into our state, we're gonna have problems like underage smoking, health concerns, insurance costs, all of these kind of things. I said to myself, they got the money already. How much did we get to take care of the initial problem that we had? Did we get any? I mean, if we don't have enough money to do eight cases in 18 months, did we get no money? That's what I'm wondering from you guys. You're the elected officials, that's what we want you to do. We want you to go find out, did we get our money or didn't we get our money? Or did we spend it somewhere else? Did the state spend it somewhere else or did the city spend it somewhere else? Those are the questions that the people want you guys up here to get the answers for. What I'm wondering is, how much money is that? $2 a pack? What do we got to work with? What, how big can that pie be? Couple of quick researches from the Alcohol Tobacco Board and all their little graphs of all the money they've collected. It seems to me that there's about somewhere between $10 and $12 million a month coming into that fund. That is an incredible amount of money. And I wonder where does it go out? It's probably kinda like the School Board thing though. I say to myself, if we don't feel like we're getting those funds doled out, don't we go and sue them to get the money like we did for the school funds? But instead, you haven't asked that question at all. The only thing he said was, we need to dole into that guy's pocket again for three more dollars, which we aren't gonna use any of it to solve this original problem. That's terrible. That's the worst thing I've ever heard of with taxes. That's probably why it's got my attention. You guys don't see me up here on every subject. I'm not up here on the water, I'm not up here on anything else. This one's got my attention cause I almost think it's against the US Constitution. For you to say it's for the kids, but you haven't done a thing. That's a state law that you're not enforcing. That's a state law. Somebody should be enforcing it or we should be at least asking for the money to do the best job that we can at enforcing it. I'm wondering why are we putting this money? Now, the Borough, they did a really good job. Last time around, it was amazing how fast they retracted from this thing and they're throwing it at the voter. All of a sudden, we wanna vote, see if the voter will weigh in on this thing. And by the way, we'll change that too before you guys vote on it. What we wanna do is we're just gonna give half of it away to some charities that we like and we'll keep the other half. How about that? Does that sound better? I doubt highly they're gonna get that passed the voter. You gotta cover this pile of crap better than that. There's no covering on it. Nothing is, there's nothing hiding when you guys say you're gonna use this and put it into the general fund. You've got a problem sitting right there. Where's all this money? I mean, the Wellness Coalition seemed to find $500,000 grant somewhere from the state. Did that come out of our $2 a pack tax when we weren't able to take care of the services that we need to provide in our city? Why would we even suggest giving half of the money to the American Cancer Society if we haven't fixed the problem in our town? We're just gonna donate half of these people's money away after we collect it? But we didn't even fix the problem? I suggest we put a couple of tobacco liaisons in the school. We could get this position funded. Now we can get people actually calling into the police. The police respond, if they don't have enough money, we start screaming for some money from the state. From all of that $10 or $12 million a month that's being brought in and all the cigarettes. Anyway, this is just a sample. I'm gonna keep standing here, I'm gonna keep holding people accountable, I'm gonna keep asking, what are you thinking? When you guys jack the price of that stuff up, no kidding, it's the 19-year-old selling it to the 18-year-olds. The 19-year-old is at an entry-level job moving into the working world. He's the one that's most motivated to figure out some kinda way to take care of this addiction. And when you guys put all of this value in there, you lure them into doing that. You create the black market right here at this table. Or you can stop it, one or the other. But if you start dipping in, grabbing a million-two just cause you got a problem, you don't really wanna fix the problem. You just wanna have a reason to keep reaching in that guy's pocket. That's unfair. That's not the kinda counsel we need up here. You guys need to get this together, think about it, see how it's looking to the rest of us out here and decide where you stand. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Spencer?
Was there amendment made to reduce that from 1.2 to 400,000 by reducing it to a dollar?
Oh yeah, I think there was some.
So a million-two?
Oh yeah, right. I think there, well, right. I don't know exactly how this all works and I know that's the Borough's position and I'm not sure what the city's position is on it or quite how that works. I did see that it was raised down a dollar. My biggest concern with that one was, is that they went, wow, that's way too much for a pack of smokes, three bucks, wow. But you know what, they didn't. They didn't even take into consideration the 75% on all of the tobacco products.
I think they reduced that also.
Was it? What's the, do you?
I think a down of 25%.
25%. It becomes more reasonable, but unless you're putting that money towards a good use, you're doing taxation without representation. And there's not enough administration fees to use like 85% and then like spend 15 on the goal. Come on, man, nobody's gonna buy that.
And then what about the statistics that show that for every dollar that goes on a pack of cigarettes, we reduce youth smoking by 7%?
That might be possible.
I mean, enforcement isn't the issue, it's the cost that they say is promoting that.
Why wouldn't enforcement be the issue if we weren't doing it?
Well, I think that far as the Police Department, they will respond to complaints and calls, but I don't know how much they get involved in a kid in the woods smoking a cigarette or walking down the street smoking. They may get calls on people that are selling illegally or obtaining illegally and that's what, I don't know, but I think that's probably what those 6Ks are.
That was kind of another one of my thoughts. I mean, we keep seeming to go at the wrong angle. We've got guys that come rolling in here all the time and put kids in the stores and we've got some places that have, you know, an atrocious record. Some people haven't had any problem at all. When you get someone that has an atrocious record like that and has had numerous violations and over and over again, that's where your guys' job is to say, what about tobacco license? Should this guy, his system is so poor that this guy gets busted over and over again? That's your position to say, hey, we wanna weigh in on the fact of whether this guy can handle having a license. Because if that guy's getting busted that one time, how many packs of smokes are going out to kids? You know, that's the review process we're gonna do for marijuana, right? We're gonna do any of that kinda stuff. We want some control over renewing those licenses or whatever, if people are abusing them, if we're not being responsible retailers. We need that control right here to say, we're not gonna allow you to do this in our city. We're not allowing you to sell these. If you can't get your employees together and check an ID and look at a date, we won't allow you to have that privilege. That's what responsible retailing is all about. You've got responsible ones here. Make the total line, you know? I could go on and on.
Any other questions for Spencer?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the last person on the list. Is there somebody else here who wants to speak to the council tonight? Seeing that, we'll move on. All right, that brings us down to consent agenda. I had two items I wanted to add, 782 and 784. Does anybody have any problem with those two?
And we have two options under state lobbying services.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
I thought we were going, I just saw that. Let me get there. Let's not count that one, let's just do the other one.
Okay. And the other one was what?
Anybody have any others you want?
I think just under the agenda, we would probably defer item one since KJ is in here.
Oh, that's right. That's before that puppy. Dick, do you have something?
Yeah, I wanna pull 5A4 for a separate vote.
Okay, and then let's approve the, I mean, let's have a motion for the consent agenda a second and then we'll vote on everything but that one, then bring that one up. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moving second. Madam Clerk, will you read items?
Approval of the minutes, regular city council meeting of July 16, 2015, and special city council meeting of July 23, 2015. Offer of employment, network administrator. Offer of employment, Microsoft Service Administrator. Resolution 152599, appointing election officials for the regular municipal election to be held October 6, 2015. Appointment of members of the Canvas Board as authorized by the city clerk. Resolution 152603, amending the 2015 General Government Operating and Capital Budget to provide a supplemental appropriation for the Library Department in the amount of $2,000. Resolution 152602, approving the city's participation in proposed refinancing by the Alaska Municipal Bond Bank of its general obligation and refunding bonds, 2005 Series 1. Authorizing the city manager and the finance director to approve a revised schedule of principal and interest payments on the city's 2005 bond as amended in accordance with the loan agreement if the bond bank successfully refinances its bonds. Endorsing inclusion of the city of Ketchikan projects in the draft 2016-2019 statewide transportation improvement program. Change order number one, final contract 1520, solid waste baler and conveyor installation P and T construction.
All right, does anybody have any comments or questions on any of them except four? Call the roll on all those except 5A4.
Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Hey, that passes four to nothing. All right, that brings us to 5A4. Dick?
You made a motion?
No, we have them, it's already on the consent. You had a comment?
Well, no, I, my comment is I could probably live with the insurance, but I can't live with annual leave. I voted against it on our last contract and I'll vote it against again.
Let's, I agree with you on that, but since we have so many few people, can we defer this item to the next meeting? Do you have a motion to defer it?
Yeah, I'll move to defer, I don't have a problem with that.
Second.
Well, it's not going anywhere with just four people or anyway, fairway. Call the roll, please.
Olson?
Sure.
Sure.
Kuz?
No.
Oh, shit.
Harris? Oh, Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Okay, so we didn't defer, it's on the table. Go ahead, Dick.
Um, I was gonna change, but you conferred.
Oh, okay. We got it passed four zero. Uh, we'll talk about it next meeting. Anybody, I think that's the consent agenda, that brings us down to, um, unfinished business, we have nothing new business. We have the state lobbyist, seven eight two. Go ahead.
I move the city council director to prepare a one-year agreement for lobbying services with two twelve-month renewal options between the city of Ketchikan and Ray Mattesowski and Associates. Set agreement to be, uh, submitted to the city council with formal consideration and approval.
moved in second it. Anybody have any comments? I think Ray does a good job.
Your honor?
Yes.
I just wanna, this, this has been the rate he has charged us for how many consecutive years?
Seven, I don't know precisely.
He's not increasing for inflation or anything, thank you.
Call the roll.
Severson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Was that everybody? All right, that brings us down to seven eight three, ordinance amending the subsection B of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, section
Your honor, I move city council to approve in first reading ordinance number fifteen seventeen ninety-seven, amending the subsection D of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, seven point one six point zero seven zero, entitled solid waste disposal, increase community solid waste fee from fifteen to eighteen per month, and establish an effective date.
Second.
Moved in second it. Bob, you want to tell us to everybody why we have to raise it?
Well, uh, historically, this program went in, uh, when there was a number of problems in the community to, uh, due to indiscriminate dumping and the desire to correct that, not only on the borough's part, but the city's part. Um, the costs of services for disposing of that material has increased with the renegotiation of the contract, uh, with our disposal company down south. Um, it's been, we originally sat down as a committee between the borough and, uh, and the city and discussed what we could put into that area wide fee for what cost. And we've been there now since about nineteen, what, Carl, ninety?
Before my time, a long time.
Yeah, been there for a long time. And it did, uh, people, I think, realize that if I'm already paying the disposal fee, I might as well take that couch to land to all right and throw it over to banks someplace else, so it's been very successful. But the cost of disposal has gone up is the reason why this has to go up.
Thanks, Bob, and you're the right guy. Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Uh, passes, um, do we need to recommend, uh, motion two?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Good, go ahead.
Your honor, I move to city council approval amendment number one to the agreement between the city of Ketchikan and the Ketchikan Gateway Borough for the disposal of solid waste and collection of the non-area-wide community solid waste disposal fee dated February sixth, two thousand and fifteen, and direct the city manager to execute the amendment on behalf of the city council.
Second.
Moved in second it. Any other, any further comments?
Well, I just also wanted to comment that this area-wide fee covers, uh, a lot of different services within the community, including the household hazardous waste as part of that. And, uh, it also helps with the recycling program as it is.
Call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us down to seven eight five, ordinance fifteen eighteen, providing for the sale of certain citywide real property acquired through tax foreclosures and not needed for public purpose, authorize such real pursuant to city charter section five seventeen, exempting such sales from requirements of Ketchikan Municipal Code, section three twelve oh six oh, first reading. We have motion.
Your honor?
Go ahead.
I move the city council to approve first reading ordinance number fifteen eighteen hundred, providing for the sale of certain citywide real property acquired through tax foreclosures and not needed for public purposes, authorizing such sales pursuant to the city, uh, charter section five dash seventeen, exempting such sales from the requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, section three point one two point zero six zero, providing for the filing of a referendum petition and establishing an effective date.
Second. Moved in second it. Bob, do you want to add anything?
There is a lot of property out there, Darryl's property, that, uh, we, we gathered, and the longer we keep it, the, the worse it gets, and if we can dispose of that, uh, at a reasonable manner, and somebody can, uh, develop that property, I think we're better for.
Anybody else?
No, I just agree with that.
Yeah, Lou, Lou, a kind of a question, uh, there was a memo that we were given that shows just the property taxes that were on it, and gave you the illusion that that was the amount that we'd sell it for. And I guess if it's a sealed bid, which is what I think this is saying, we, that would be a minimum, but I would hopefully would be pushing the pro- value of the property rather than if somebody didn't, almost nothing for something. And I don't understand it.
It is a minimum bid. That's the minimum that we would have to recover from the sale.
Recover?
It will be halted more through the competitive bid process.
And we don't have any option to refuse a bid if it's fair?
I'm gonna have to defer it to the city attorney.
I didn't, I didn't know, so I was on the last amount. There's probably some cost because there's some of those buildings that we had to do work for. The minimum bid is set by what we're to get, uh, by state statute to cover the taxes, penalty, interest, and our costs. Frankly, I think most of these properties aren't all that, aren't all that, uh, desirable, and the minimum bid, uh, you know, some of them may be likely to get that. I guess the other thing to point out, and it's mentioned in your packet too, is if we get more than that, um, we're to notify the former owner, and then I don't recall off the top of my head, but there's a timeline, I think six months.
Yeah.
Uh, if we hear back from them in six months, anything we would get over and above the taxes, costs, and entry and stuff, it goes to that person. And we turn over the excess, uh, to them. I know in times past, the council's paid for appraisals, and it's had, uh, you know, higher, higher minimums. I also know that with most of these property, at least, there's a big impetus to, uh, get them out to somebody that'll at least take care of them, because there's a number of them that are pretty hazardous shape.
Well, in this, and you said it includes any costs that we've incurred to try to?
At the time of final sale, correct? That those will all be calculated in.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I want to get the ordinance rolling, and then as we try and coordinate and get to date and run the minimum bids up and plug in the cost, because I, some of them we've had to spend a chunk of change because they were just a wreck and were a hazard to the neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bob, you got a question?
Oh, I just wondered, this, this is gonna, I don't know what it costs to convey the properties to whoever the buyer is, but are they gonna cover those costs in regards to them, you know?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm thinking the recording fees, we ought to record them just so we should do it. Um, I don't, you know, I don't know if finance has any, any further thoughts. I don't think it's gonna take a great deal of, of, of time. It's gonna be pretty much a standard form for everybody, and then the bid packet, and then just, uh, you know, my time to close it, get the signatures notarized. It's probably pretty, pretty de minimis if we get the rest of it.
Your honor?
Yes.
Are, are we looking at any language in, in regards to the sale that upon purchase they have some kind of obligation to do something with the property in regards to demolition or, or fixing it up?
There is, there is, um, not only in the ordinance itself, but in, in, in the bid packet, you know, a, a lot of disclaimers. I don't know if we could enforce them, but I want to get, make sure that we identify the particularly bad ones, and, you know, in all fairness, say, oh, by the way, you may need to, uh, you know, repair or even demolish this at your, at your expense, or there'll be legal action brought to make sure that that gets done.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there was some kind of a clock that we could set in there, and being reasonable, that the whole idea is we have some properties out there, they're gonna turn very dangerous in a short period of time, and something has to be done to them, whether it's renovation or demolition.
Yeah, and I didn't, I, I, I mean, the, the people needing to know about the, the conditions, do their own, own inspections. Uh, there'll be the disclaimer, and I want to put in, I don't think that's in there yet that I really liked, that, you know, there may be action brought against them, even by the city. I don't know, Bob, in a packet or with across the board, that we can say, everybody's gotta have this done by March one. But, you know, they need to be informed, and we're gonna have at least, you know, some of the, the location of the properties, they can go out there and, and look, and some of them, it's completely obvious that, you know, you may be better off just tearing the thing down.
People should, you know, realize that they may be just buying it for the property itself.
Right, you got it.
Thank you. All right, thanks Mitch. All right, call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that passes four zero, brings us down to budget transfer acquisition easement and repair of storm drain system beneath Madison lumber, hardware, ink, and timber marine. Do we have a motion?
There, your honor?
Go ahead.
I moved the city council authorize city manager to secure such easements as may be required for the city to accept maintenance and repair responsibilities for the storm drainage systems located beneath Madison lumber, hardware incorporated, and timber marine as constructed under contract number ninety-nine dash forty, Bar Harbor Parking and Harbor Amities Project. Upon acquisition of such easements, direct the engineering division to prepare bidding plans and specifications to let a contract for repair of said drainage systems, and approve a budget transfer of seventy-five thousand from the appropriate reserves of the public works sales tax, uh, fund to the streets and, Streets Division, two thousand fifteen, Bar Harbor Parking and Harbor Amities Project Storm Drain System Repair Capital Account.
Second.
Moved in second it. Dick, do you have it?
Uh, no, it's, to me, it's something we need to get fixed, because, uh, apparently we can put the pipes under there, and they're falling apart. Or have fell apart, and now we're dumping into the, underneath our building, so we need to, to me, we need to take care of it.
Bob? Yeah, um, I think before we jump into looking at, you know, going through the full easement process, um, and I spoke a little bit with Timber and Marine today. If you look at the drainage there, there's no drainage coming from city properties under that building. Um, it comes off the private properties and off state highway. Uh, under the construction of the parking lot, there was pipe access made to Timber and Marine, and there was a connection made, uh, underneath the building to the existing drain system. That, uh, section underneath the building was, I would say, probably improperly installed. It's a plastic pipe, uh, non, you know, glued fitting or anything like that, but when the tide comes in, it floated it and disconnected it, and so then it didn't work. Well, at some point, somebody went back there and did a repair to it again, and this time they used ropes to tie it down. Rope deteriorated, and we're back in the same situation. Um, I think that it was improperly installed, and that was something that was done under the, under the contract. I think it would be worth, you know, looking at the city going in and repair it in a fashion that it would be stable, um, and after talking to Timber Marine, they have a, I think it's a five-foot height from the pipe to the, the bottom of the building, and they're not, um, you know, opposed to maybe doing a bracing system off that and fasten it so the pipe wouldn't come apart. But again, this is pro- uh, something that's on private property, uh, and the uphill drainage is not that of the city, but I think there might be some obligation there to try to get it corrected, uh, from the original project and, and repaired. And I don't think that we need to go into an easement system to where we have responsibilities and continued access issues. And then as I look at the map here for Madison, um, we do have drainage that enters into Madison, and so does the state highway. So I think it's a shared responsibility. But if you look at the map, further north there, there's a larger drainage that drains into Bar Harbor. And if we could take the two street drains, I believe, or one, um, that runs underneath the building and re-divert that, if the elevations are correct, into that storm drain and get it completely out from underneath the private property, I think we would be better off in the long run. I talked to Steve a little bit about this, and I don't know if you had a chance, Steve, to review any of the elevations in that area. But I think it's something we should look at before we go into the full easement process. Steve, do you have anything to add?
Acting Public Works Director Steve Copron. Um, I didn't get a chance to look into the elevations. Uh, the guys were out in the field today, the, the, uh, working on the overlay inspection work that started. Uh, I, I had thought about the easement questions we discussed. I could go either way, uh, on, on the easement under Timber Marine. You know, I, I think if, if they're willing to go, I think if they're willing to sign something once we've placed something in place saying that it's theirs from then on, then, then you're probably right, we might not, you know, we could do away with an easement there. But if it's something we're gonna have to go back in and fix at some point, then we still would want an easement. So it would depend on whether or not they signed off on taking future responsibility for it. At least that's the way I look at it.
Is there a trouble with access underneath that particular building, you know?
It's both very, very limited, and basically crawl space, uh, conditions.
But access is probably through the inside of their building down to the floor?
I haven't been in there myself, so I don't, I'm not positive where it goes in.
I think that may be the issue. So if we had an easement that we had to go to, we'd have to have reasonable access, I would think.
Right, so you'll, if you want to, if you want to do away with the need for an easement under Timber Marine, I think the only way would be for them to sign off on the finished product being theirs from, from then on.
So can we approve this tonight with that idea? We, you guys will check with, try to make it?
I would suggest you defer until you get a chance to defer.
I mean, I want to work with them, but I think there might be a better solution for the city if we could avoid such easements across private property. And correct the drainage problem that they did.
I concur, uh, Deputy Public Works Director Seth Brack will be back on vacation in about another week and a half, so, and he's the one that's been pretty much bulldogging this and has the bubble.
Have we had contact with the state on this particular issue?
I don't know who he's talked to from the state on this.
We'll have to do that as part of the review, so we'll talk.
Your honor, I move to defer.
Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Um, Dick, did you want to say something?
All I wanted to say was that according to Timber Marine, access under there is between the two buildings, between Madison and Timber Marine, it's narrow, but it's access.
Okay, call the roll.
All I was gonna say is it, it, it looks like you're leaning towards option one, which would be helpful for us going, so we aren't having to try and figure out two different scenarios for, for this from here forward. But if we know what direction we're going, then we can bring the, bring the elements back refined.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Kuz?
Uh, yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, I'm just not used to that floor. Now, did you need an act, um, did you say you wanted to answer on option one or two or something, or?
That's a weird. I kinda, I kinda read that as four hands, so that's what I was looking for.
Thank you.
Bring the options back. Say, Lou?
Yeah.
We're bringing options back.
They're bringing options back.
Yeah. They're bringing options back.
But we're gonna put our efforts into option, option one.
Seven eight seven.
Your honor?
Right.
Um, I talked to, um, Carl a little bit about this this afternoon. I'd like to split this motion. Uh, there are two separate mo- uh, uh, issues, and I don't want one to conflict with the other. There's one portion of this motion, which is the, uh, working with the, uh, Great Alaska Lumberjack Show and, um, uh, the Dawson property in regard to the permitting required to, uh, place an additional rock slope out in the Thomas Basin. And then a complete separate ish- issue is whether or not the city want to accept a donation of a lot from Mr. Dawson.
Okay, well, let me, um, uh, we're talking about offer to initiate discussions for the donation of US four three seven block nineteen, A lot ten B two A one two, the city of Ketchikan from Jack Dawson. Um, so you want to make two se- do you want to make, um, one motion out of this and then make the other motion?
That's correct.
All right, go ahead.
I move the city council to direct- I move the City Council Director City Manager to work with the Great Alaska Lumberjack Show and Jack Dawson regarding the permitting required for the placement of additional rock slope fill in Thomas Basin in the interim measure of addressing the sheet pile retaining wall adjacent to their properties in the harbor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You didn't second, did you want to say anything else?
Mr. Shear is here, and I don't know if he wanted to address the council in any point in regards to this particular project, so.
Yeah, I could.
I would. You bet.
Rob Shear, six twelve Lotus, Ketchikan. Though over the course of the last several years, we've been, uh, attempting to get the sheet pile addressed as far as a mitigation of the failing sheet pile or the imminent failure of the sheet pile. And we've done a few steps on the, on the, uh, part that faces the Berenoff property. We mitigated that and have further work to do in the next phase, uh, where we're going to actually slope it with some additional rock face. But the portion facing Thomas Basin is a little more tricky. The sheet pile, while it sits on the city of Ketchikan's property, the uplands is clearly, uh, private property. And, uh, we want to work with the city to mitigate that. One of the first things, uh, through the engineering firms of PND and KPFF is to establish a rock slope that entomes a portion of that seawall. And, uh, while we want to work with the city to eventually have a promenade, uh, along that back area, uh, funding, current funding, uh, uh, mechanisms aren't available, uh, such as a CPV for a few years, which, which would be a perfect funding mechanism for that. So, uh, rather than waiting for those type of funds to be available, uh, the Great Alaska Lumberjack Show would like to move forward with just entombing the sheet pile. And then at a later date, we can move forward with the engineering and potential of a promenade that will encapsulate the outer, outer area. So anyway, the, we see it's, uh, the most expedient and, uh, the best way the private sector and the public sector can work together would be to work to getting permitting in place and then execute that entombment of the sheet pile.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Alright. Thank you. Alright, any other questions for a call the roll? Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Alright, we'll work with him on that. Uh, Bob, the other motion?
Uh, the other motion is to advise Jack Dawson that at the present time, the city, does not intend to participate in a discussion in the donation of US four-three-seven block nineteen dash A lot ten, B two, A one to the city of Ketchikan and notify the Great Alaska Lumberjack Show, Jack Dawson, and other interested parties, the city's willingness to continue further discussion regarding a permanent solution to the Thomas Basin sheet pile retaining wall and construction of the waterfront promenade.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any other comments? Dick?
Is the intent that we will never talk with Jack Dawson about this donation? If it is, I can't support it. At some point in time, I think we ought to be in a position to support, to consider it.
Um, at some point, when we have some money to.
Yeah, yeah, I'm saying, and there's reasons for taking it and not taking it, and Bob and I have discussed them, and I, it, it just is, I don't want to shut a door that may be good for us in the future.
Bob, the Matt?
Yeah, and in regards to this lot, uh, it's under the parking covenant, I think, for the downtown area, and I would, I guess, encourage Jack, Jack to maybe make a proposal to the Ketchikan Gateway Borough, since they are the entities that are in charge of the, um, parking regula- or the parking development in the downtown area, and this probably fits into their, um, you know, their, their availability of, of working with it. So I, I can, as a suggestion, just off the cuff, that would be one I'd make.
Matt?
I, I just don't see why we would take it on unless that retaining wall was completely fixed. That would be, why would we take on a property that we then have to put in a couple million dollars into repairing before we can use it?
Thank you very much. Call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yeah. Yeah.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Alright, that passes four to nothing. That brings us down to seven eight eight. Proposal for conveyance of thirty-three nineteen Main Street, Old Fire Station Number One to Ketchikan Area Arts and Humanities Council, Artist Residency Program. We have a motion.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council Director City Manager to respond to the August sixth, two thousand fifteen proposal of the Ketchikan Area Arts and Humanities Council for the conveyance of three nineteen Main Street to the agency for the purpose of establishing an artist residency program as determined appropriate by the City Council.
Second.
Moved in second. Matt, do you want to lead it off?
Sure, I, I think this is, quite frankly, a really good idea. It's one way for us to get rid of the building. But it's also another way that we can contribute to something that is growing and is, and is going to be, and, or is a major driver in our economy. I, the part that I don't like about it is I, I think we just give it over, with the mandate that the front facade retain the historic fire station look to it, because I think that's important. And I, I think then we wash our hands of it. I think we let the Arts, Arts and Humanities Council use that money to go out and get grants to fix it up and to pay for keeping it heated and keeping it lit, but I, I think at that point, that's, it's a substantial monetary amount that's going over there. I think we let them run with it. They are, they have a proven track record. They are incredibly capable of doing that. And I think at this time, it's the best thing for the building and the best thing for the community.
Kitty and Bob?
I guess for me, I mean, I agree with Matt that, uh, they certainly do a good job, and I think they could pull this off. But, um, I've had a lot of people approach me about the fire hall and, you know, what's the city going to do with it? Are they ever going to put it up for sale? I'd like to know what it's worth. And then the other thing that, um, I have a bit of heartburn on is paying the utilities for three years. I'd like to see some better plan for that. So, you know, I, I'm not prepared to go forward with this right now. I'd want some more information.
Bob?
Yeah, I, I'm not necessarily in favor at this time either. The city is utilizing that building for record storage, uh, which we would probably end up having to pay for, if, if we weren't so using it that way. And then, uh, it is in close proximity to, uh, City Hall where, uh, numerous times, people have had to go over and look through records and find past records and, and, uh, that type of stuff. And I am still, um, I think, uh, optimistic that at some point, that facility could be used for a centralized heating facility for the downtown block. Um, I haven't given up completely on that idea. Right now, there's a project going forward on the airport that, um, will give us more insight to the availability and, and, uh, efficiencies of the wood pellet system. And, and I think it is viable in that particular building. So at this time, I'm not in favor of giving up that piece of property, and again, it's a city asset. And, and I think that if we were to dispose it, we would, uh, get fair, fair market value and, and put it out for bidding that manner, so. I'm going to vote no.
Dick?
Yeah, without recycling all the words, I agree with what Bob said. There's, there's, I think there's other values for it. If we get rid of it, we sell it for fair market value.
Yeah, I was, um, talked to, um, Kathleen, and she called me at a great time. All I said, oh, let's just sell it. I apologize, I was in not the best mood at the moment. I'd love to see us work with them and do something. I'm curious of, yeah, what our costs would be, if we did something like this for three years or, and I'm curious to see if there's anybody interested out there in, um, wanting the property. I'm not sure if they, if there's somebody out there would pay us for it or not. I'd sure like to, um, dispose of it. And if we can't sell it to somebody, I have no problem working with the Arts, um, Council and doing something over there. Matt?
Well, I think if the, if the mood is to sell it, one of the questions that the council will have to deal with then in the future is whether or not you wanted to retain the fire station look. And feel that we keep hearing from historic Ketchikan how important that stuff is to, to tourism, and I think, I think there's, there's a lot of merit to that, especially with this building. In the short term, if we're not going to do anything with the building and we're just going to essentially sit on it and utilize it for storage, I think one of the things that's also appearing here is that Saksman's potentially in need of, of housing their carvers, and it might not be a bad idea for the city to reach out and allow them to use a A or two for that for next summer.
I wouldn't have a problem with you.
Right, I think that, um, I mean, I'm not prepared to say absolutely no and, and vote against it, but I would like some more information, and maybe there's a different type of plan that could be fashioned, to see how it works. That doesn't necessarily involve giving the building up, but that, you know, they come up with a way to pay for utilities and we let them use it while they need those carvers and see what people think of the idea and how it goes over, and then look at that after.
Carl, you getting direction?
I've heard from two council members who seem to be interested in trying to work with the Arts Council on an interim solution. I've heard from two other council members who don't seem to have any interest in conveying the property whatsoever.
So why don't we, um, have this on the next agenda and see what some other council members want to do? That gives us more time.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not sure, but I believe that the carving, um, facility at Saksman is a for-profit entity where they're charging admissions and, uh, exclusion if you're not standing, so we would be dealing with a, um, not necessarily a benevolent type of, uh, operation. We'd be dealing with a commercial entity to give them space in a city facility.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if the arrangement is with the Arts Council, the Arts Council is a nonprofit, what they do with it, if you decide to dedicate space to the Arts Council, that's as far as our interests would normally go. We wouldn't be getting involved in who their subleases or subtenants are. So the question is whether you want to make the building, or a portion of the building, on an interim basis or a permanent basis available to the Arts Council. My recommendation would be, I would strongly recommend that you don't want to get involved in the issue of who their tenants are and what they're going to be. That's going to get awfully difficult.
Let's put it on the next agenda. I really, I mean, one thing for sure is I don't want to see the, um, carvers, um, not having a place, so I'm willing to work with them, making it available for them. Do you need a motion to defer? Yeah, make the motion to defer. We did it for, call the roll. Take your time.
Kuz?
Okay.
Severson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Alright, that was referred to the next meeting to Kathleen. We'll see you guys all again. Uh, that brings us down vouchers, daily news, one thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, move to prove vouchers, Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of one thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-five cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, and call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Okay, that passes four, that bring, then nothing brings us down to managers' report.
Number, Mr. Mayor, uh, at the next meeting, we will be presenting the two thousand fourteen audit. That will be the first business item. Given the council member absences tonight and the fact that this is council member Olson's last meeting, I request that the executive sessions on collective bargaining be deferred to the meeting of August twentieth.
So be it.
My intent will be to have the overtime report that the council requested at a special meeting of July twenty-third to you as part of the packet for the August twentieth meeting, and then I'll leave it to council determination whether or not you want to conduct a, a special meeting or not.
Okay.
Last item I have, uh, was alluded to during public comment. And I laid an item on the table tonight. Monday, this past Monday, the Borough Assembly, uh, took up the issue of the tobacco excise tax. I've tried to outline the changes that the Assembly did in fact make, and then further changes that they will be making or at least considering at their meeting of August seventeenth. The action that was undertaken, uh, is not at all in sync with the agreement that was reached by Cooperative Relations, and brought forward both to the Assembly and the Council. I'm looking for direction as to what, if any, uh, action or comment the Council wants to make. My understanding is if the Borough Assembly does want to get it to the voters, uh, for a vote at the October reelection, they will have to finalize whatever they do at their meeting, uh, of August seventeenth. So that doesn't give this body a lot of time to respond.
Well, I'm glad you put that on there, because, and I don't know what the council feels myself. I still feel we should go with, um, or get back to the Borough and say, hey, the Community Relations Committee's, um, proposal is what I'd like to stick to. Whatever they want to make the dollar amount, I have no problem with, one, two, three. But I think the way that we, um, the percentages and everything, I'd like to stick to, but. Any others?
I agree with that. I mean, that we went through the process, it was voted on, um, and we agreed to it, and that's what I think we should stay with.
Dick?
Well, yeah, I agree. I, I've got reservations now, to be honest with you, about the value of the Cooperation Ship, Cooperative Relations Committee. If the Borough Assembly members will say one thing at that table and then go say another one sitting in the, in the meeting. And that's exactly what they did if the paper reported it correctly. So, uh, and, and it is not what this body agreed to, and it's not what the, uh, committee agreed to. So, uh, I don't know how we communicate that to them, because, uh, I don't know whether we can agree to, agree to that ordinance. I guess they can send it out to voters, but, uh, there's also a clause in there that says we've got to agree to something. I'm not too sure I'm willing to agree to it.
Matt?
I, I thought we as a council were pretty clear what we support. I was a little taken aback by our, by the, the rationalization of the, as it was reported at the Borough meeting, that we had been silent on the issue. I, I thought we as a body had been very clear in our support for the three-dollar tax. The health benefits of smoking and the health benefits of tobacco are one of the greatest health scams and consumer scams that were brought forth by com- you know, by corporations. It's completely been proven that way. I have no problem charging this ta- these taxes. I remember when we tried to do this last time, and we were doing it right as Petersburg was instituting it, and the city manager from Petersburg was very eloquent when he said, it's not so much that we're taxing this to also reduce smoking, but we're also looking at all the social costs that smoking has. Increased calls on, for the, for the medical guys at the, at the fire station, the EMTs going out to people about health men, health issues. We've got all the extra garbage for, you know, you have the cigarette butts up there. You have, there's all that other stuff that the community pays for. And I just think, quite frankly, that the public would be more than, would more than welcome support, more than welcome they would support this. I, I don't, I don't understand how at this point, all of a sudden, we've gone from being in the strong majority to in the matter of a two to three hour meeting, the City Council is now in a, in a very limited minority.
Bob, do you want to add anything?
I'm not necessarily to say cigarette tax. Carl, when did you say that special meeting was scheduled?
A special meeting, your next regular meeting is the seventeenth.
Okay. But you were doing that, that's when the overtime stuff would be available, is that what you said?
The overtime report will be available as part of the packet for our meeting of the twentieth.
Twentieth, okay. Thank you.
And then Carl, also on that seventeenth Borough meeting, they're going to bring up the tax free again. Can you?
I'm not aware of that, Mr. Mayor. I'm not aware of that, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I got, that's what I got invoked from the chamber, but if it is, could you reiterate the city's position on it? I believe there'll be people there to talk about it. Anybody have anything else for the manager?
Mr. Mayor, I'm unclear if, I've heard from two council members as to what action, if any, you want us to take to what the Borough did relative to the excise tax.
I, I think just send back what we approved and encourage them to approve it, move on.
And the dollar amount, the council is?
Um, I'm not worried about the dollar amount, whatever they want to pick, but Matt has shown that he has no problem with the three.
I mean, it went through a committee.
Yeah, I understand.
He said it was, I mean, it's not that I don't have a problem with it. We sat here as a body, and I think it was a kind of, if I remember right, we gave a unanimous thumbs up, seven of us, at three. And, and, and Dick's sentiment that he's not quite sure why we're doing the Cooperative Relations, this, this has been going on since I got on the City Council. Anytime a taxation issue comes up, we have a Cooperative Relations Committee meeting, or we used to have a Tax Committee meeting, and that got abandoned within the first six months of me being on here, because they felt it wasn't worthwhile. We would have a discussion there. We'd say, we're bringing it back. We'd bring it back, and at the next Borough Assembly meeting, they're acting on it and doing what, I mean, we, we've been clear. I'm, I'm, I'm unaware of how, of how we were silent on the matter.
Bob, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just want to remember that, in mind that we're, that it goes through that Cooperative Relation, we'll gather information, do anything, and it's advisory. The council and the Assembly at the table has the option to do what they choose to do.
All right. Does anybody have a problem with sending the letter saying we stick by what we approved?
Well, I think we ought to support what we approved earlier.
That's what I'm saying.
And, and, and I guess we still have the option, because I think somewhere around, or this may have got initiated by, it would have joined the us for them, but we could move forward and raise it on our own.
Right.
Clearly, the evidence shows that what we were doing was trying to break down the amount, number of kids that are smoking. And the three-dollar rate was the one that was, that came up the best option from the Wellness Coalition, and that was in, that was our guidance. Obviously, there's some smarter people than they are sitting down the street.
All right. Did any, Bob, you have one last question?
Yeah, I, I want to make sure that during the Cooperative Relation meeting, I did ask Dan to make sure that he had numbers available for the, a lesser tax or a new tax schedule that was brought forward, which apparently he did. And, you know, I think that if we're looking at reducing the, the smoking in youth and, and, and certain aspects, adults, I felt the dollar was reasonable. I think that the sunset clauses, come back and see if the tax was really doing what it was supposed to be was reasonable. And so that, that's where I'm at it.
Matt?
I think the evidence has shown that a dollar isn't doing it. And I, and how many communities are not charging a tax that are in Alaska that are of our size? I can't remember. I'm, I'm thinking there's zero. We're the only one that does not tax cigarettes or tobacco or e-cigarettes. It's, you know, we, if you're, if you're going to do it and your goal is to reduce it, and we're not going to, we're not going to increase the black market amongst teenagers for cigarettes, you should put it higher.
Carl?
I just want to be clear on the direction I'm being given, that the council wants me to convey to the Assembly that the framework reached by the Cooperative Relations Committee such that fifteen percent would go to smoking cessation, up to fifteen percent. The balance would be split relative to population, currently sixty city, forty Borough, and the council will accept the level of the tax as determined by the Assembly. That's what I'm hearing.
Sounds good to me.
Right.
That's what I'll convey.
So it'll be shut, so it'll be done. Anything else, Carl?
No, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
We have one executive session. We have one executive session, which takes us to the executive sessions, and it is the one called? Fifteen A three, right? Collective Bargaining.
Litigation Strategy. Fifteen A three.
Why have I not seen it?
It may not be on the paper, but it's in the packet.
Oh, there we go. I, oh, I don't have the whole thing.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it.
Oh, no, that's it. Okay, there we go. Do we have a motion for a request for executive session, discussion of litigation strategies with legal counsel within the attorney-client privilege regarding the recovery from Joseph Burns and Rehabilitation Research Institute of the cost that the city of Ketchikan has incurred as a result of demolition of three, four, seven Bottom Street Old Hospital? Do we have a motion, please?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
Remove the city council, which is clearly consistent with the city manager's memorandum dated July twentieth, two fifteen. It is in the best interest for the city to go into executive session according to KMC two-point-zero, four-point-zero-two-five, A three, and AS four-four-point-six-two-point-three-one-zero, C three. Discuss litigation strategies with legal counsel within the attorney-client privilege regarding the recovery from Joseph Burns Rehabilitation Research Institute of the cost that the city has incurred as a result of demolition of three, forty-seven Bottom Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move in second. Call the roll, please.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes. That passes four to zero. We'll go and read real quick. Oh. The management direction, we have no further, um, action at this time. That brings us to... We did do council member comments.
We haven't done that yet.
Okay. Council member comments. Uh, hold on a second. Um, nobody's here, so nobody cares about those. Mayor, council comments. Dick?
I'm good.
Judy?
Uh, just that I was really disappointed, um, in the assembly meeting on Monday about the, that excise tax. Uh, Terrence Robbins, I think, did a great job presenting information at countless council meetings and assembly meetings and the cooperative relations, um, committee. I'd like to thank him for that. But it's disappointing when all that work goes into something. We had an agreement, they all agreed, they moved it forward. And to be, to have all of that information discounted and to have the whole issue brought down to city council doing a cash grab, it makes me wonder if that community cooperative relations committee is really worth doing. And also for the record, I mean, and I've had a lot of people call me, um, because apparently at the meeting it was said that, um, this was brought forward by Zingy, the reformed smoker. I'm not reformed. And you should know that, um, my smoking increases on city council. That's all I have.
Uh, Matt?
Um, so long and thanks for all the fish. It's been a pleasure. I started down this road in two thousand and six on the school board. Just trying to, just trying to help the community and I've tried to stick with that personal mandate ever since, so. Looking forward to the new adventure in, that's coming up and I'll sort of miss the meetings.
Watch online.
Uh, maybe I'll just send texts every Thursday, hey, how's it going? Sitting in Chinatown. But, uh, no, it's, it's been, I've enjoyed every minute of it. Even after I go home grumpy, I look back and I still enjoy it. Um, we do have an upcoming election. I know from experience what you need sitting at the dais isn't a one-trick pony. You need someone who, who is looking out for the community as a whole and not just looking for one thing to solve and then they're done. I encourage anyone and everyone to, to run. It's, I know it's tough in a small town. And I know it's tough to run any type of election in a small town because people get afraid to say their opinions. It might affect their business, it might affect their relationship. But I think when it comes down to things in the greater good, people are very understanding about that. Working with city staff has been a pleasure. Working with you all has been a pleasure, even the mayor. And, um, yeah, Saturday, nine AM garage sale. Come on, come on. Take whatever you can.
Excellent. Thank you, Matt. Bob?
Thank you, Matt. Um, thank you for your service. Appreciated your input on the council and I liked what your comments were about, uh, if you're looking for the seat, not being a one-trick pony. And, and we do need public involvement. Um, I'd also like to thank all the people that prepared the reports that are in the general government, um, information packet here. I appreciate the time they put into those and it's interesting when you look at them and see where the declines and gains are in, in some of these operations. And I don't want, I don't want to think that they don't go unnoticed.
Um, I'm also disappointed at times in, in actions taken by either body in regards to, uh, what goes on in the cooperative relations. I still think that there is some benefit there and I hope we can get back on the right track and solve some of the community problems currently. Uh, because there's still plenty of them to go around. That's all I got.
Thanks, Bob. Um, well, that brings to me already. Uh, Matt, thank you very much for being here, servicing, um, it's been wonderful to get to know you. And, um, say hi to Ralph whenever you see him. This is a petition. Anybody who wants to file for Matt's position, um, you can come see Kim at the city clerk's office tomorrow. She'll be smiling in there and you can grab as many as you want to give out to friends and family, um, or put one in for yourself. It's that time. Bob, congratulations. Thanks for signing up again.
You're welcome.
So we got people moving on them already. I've got mine here, I got to get moving on. Second of all, um, hocking committee. Um, we've been meeting on that with, um, Dave, Borough guys, Sue Peters. And, um, we've, um, separated the, um, we're really not doing anything with the, um, independent tour guys, you know, the guys that have McDonald's meals and those guys that have spots along the front. Um, what we are looking at is making it so anybody that's wanting to do that kind of business further into the town has to be in a location like over by Hazel Quist parking lot where they have booths, so nobody's selling out of a door or a business. Um, our main focus, so that's the only thing we're doing with those. Everything seems to be working fine on that side. On the hocking side, you'll be seeing something around September seventeenth. The committee made a decision, um, on Tuesday that our goal is to eliminate hocking from doors altogether. With the other guys separated out, so we haven't, we don't, we haven't drugged the independent tour guys into that, um, I think it'll work. And so I'm just warning you ahead of time, it's coming up. We want to bring it to the council before everybody leaves town. And so everybody knows what's going on. If you have any questions, get ahold of me, um, Dave Martin, Sue Peters, and, um, Carl, we can talk about it. Matt, in honor of your last meeting, do you want to make the motion to adjourn?
No, we won't adjourn.